To give more when it's not there to do.
So Molly, you're asking for an additional fifth. Last year, or this year rather, 2024, we budgeted and gave or giving $35,000.
Correct.
We do not have an interlocal agreement with the county. Our agreement is directly with the shelter.
Correct.
We changed that last year, or this year, and it worked really well, and it has been. Are you, what kind of increase are you asking from for the county?
Same.
They paid 35 also in, okay, I didn't know.
Same.
Okay.
They should pay more than us. It's a county responsibility, I'm telling you, it's a county responsibility. And the county should pay more than the city pays. How will that stop?
And I'm not going to argue that point with you. How would, my question to you, because I'm, how would you suppose that I figure that difference to justify? How, like, the percentage wise, how would you suppose that I do that?
By law, animal control is a county responsibility, is it not?
It's correct.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
But we don't have animal control.
We don't have an officer.
We don't have animal control.
We don't have an officer.
We don't have animal control.
What he's talking about is, we're talking more capital letter and lowercase letter. In terms of the legal requirement, animal control is a county responsibility. When you say we don't have animal control, I'm not going to pass judgment beyond saying that it's a county responsibility, whether that responsibility is being funded, obligations being met, that's, somebody else got to answer that question.
What do you do with people bringing feral cats? Do you take them?
No.
You don't take feral cats? Okay.
No. And right now, I'm not in taking any cats. We are full on cats, and I have a sickness running through the shelter with the cats.
Just for everybody's time tonight, I would love to talk about this.
I know.
For two hours, because it does interest me. She's asking for a $15,000 increase from last year to this year. We will, obviously, the council, I'm sure, will take that under advisement, no, I would encourage council members, if you get a chance, go up to the shelter, if you haven't been, or if you haven't been in a year or six months, look at it, go see Molly, ask questions. She's excellent at answering them, she's not afraid to answer them, she'll tell you black and white, that's what it is. And, you know, you'll learn about the feral cats, you'll learn about the sickness that's going on, you'll learn about the struggles that Molly and her staff and the volunteers go through daily, and it might help you make a decision for or against supporting whatever you want to support. Does that make sense?
I got one question for Molly.
Mm-hmm.
Molly, I didn't see in your any travel expenses, but you're going to take them to the vet. Is that included, or do you just need that? Your mileage, you're going over to Hartsburg, right?
Because we're using, we bought a van last year, and that's under the vet, or, sorry, that's under ours, pardon me.
You still have operating costs for the van. I didn't want you to short yourself.
And that's under, that falls under operating cost, on the second page.
Okay.
So that, that's, gas, we use the, the, I have a debit card, and I use-
I just want to make sure you had that included in all of your-
We do.
Any other questions on that?
This building lease agreement, who owns that building?
So it is a county building. When the, when the previous shelter had it and it closed, they deeded it over to the county. Half of that building is being rented by First Class Trucking, which is over in Lewisport. And that's where you're seeing that bottom, the building lease.
That's the income from that?
Correct. They pay a monthly rent for half of that building.
To, to the county.
To the county.
But it goes into a restricted fund for the shelter. They cannot use that money for anything else.
Well, Molly, thank you for your time.
Any other questions?
Thank you for doing it for our animals. I appreciate it.
No problem.
I really do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
All right, building and zoning, we'll be able to get through these a little bit, and get on the agenda. Other than salary increases, there was, whoops, the part-time laborers, that was changed in there, Connie, what was, is there-
We took out the part-time laborer for next year, because that idea just did not work.
That was the, the idea of the mowing aspect, you, you may have been in the audience, remember that. We were going to try to, rather than using a street department, we were going to try to subcontract out yards, get mowed, and I, we got met with a lot of blocks that we didn't think of that would, didn't cross our minds.
Took it out for next year.
So it's down $4,000?
Yes.
Basically, yes.
That's it on building and zoning. Parks and Rec, Steve, you're back. Come on up here, please.
Steve gets two bites of the apple.
He does. Well, it's kind of strange, well, Chief kind of does, so we already talked about it, really. Parks and Rec. The good is, is I don't think he wants a mower.
I'll take a mower.
Huh?
You want to give me another mower?
No.
Yeah?
Actually, he has nothing in equipment for next year.
You Parks guys have mowed me out.
I'll take it over.
I know you would, you guys and your mowers, I swear. I know, I don't even like it. All right. Any questions? Steve, is there anything you want to point out specifically or bring up as far as the Parks budget goes for next year?
No, not really.
The council, is there any questions for the Parks budget?
What's this category to recreational supplies? Says current, is that $10,000, am I reading that right?
Yes.
Yes.
Then you go over to unexpendited balance, and it's $12,000.
Because we added an additional 10 in there, under the addition, additional appropriation column, has an additional 10, so that brought it up to 20. And then now he's only spent seven of that, so he still has 12 left to spend this year on supplies.
What is that, you know what that supplies is, Steve? What do you use that money for, that recreational supply? Like-
Field dry?
Field dry, field conditioner.
Bathroom, whenever they have problems in any of the bathrooms, and any of the shelter, the bathrooms in the parks, if they have to buy parts and all that kind of stuff.
Comes out of there?
Comes out of there, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, thank you, Steve.
If I'm looking at this right, his overall budget's down $140,000.
It's because, at the beginning of the year, we added that $75,000 into his budget. And, so, he doesn't have that.
How much is it, $114?
Down.
But if you look at his-
I know, it's because we have the additional stuff.
Yeah.
All right. We'll move on to dispatch, we kind of already talked about dispatch, but we, I'm going to bring it up, I know it's on our agenda for later, but I didn't mean a new business, P S A Dispatch Joint Budget Meeting is this Thursday, I believe Doty's reached out to all of you. Looks like Gerald, you may or may not be able to make it, everybody else can.
Don't know yet.
Right?
I don't know yet.
Well, okay. We've got enough for a court, I'm going to know, Mike, he can, Phil, you said you could, Brian and Larry emailed, said he could. Meeting's at the courthouse, so don't show up here. Okay? No, I've been looking for it, it's like the wrong building.
Six, seven, six?
Six.
Six. So-
And I will, you don't have to bring your big budget book with you, I will provide you copies, so.
All right. Team cap development.
I don't know, Chris, if we really need to go through the rest of these.
No, I don't think so.
We could wait till next Monday evening, because they really don't involve any-
No, you're right.
Apartments, unless you just really want to-
If you have questions, email us, call us, stop by.
And then next Monday's when we can go through them and discuss it.
Heard it.
Just ask that, like, within the general fund, if, if you want to add something, we may need to cut something else in order to add that in. Just because right now, I've got it worked out on the general fund, I've got $109,000 operating balance, which is really low. So, I hope you won't make many, many changes. The what? Not yet.
Okay.
Sit tight.
All right. That concludes the Department 2025 budget request discussion.
For now.
For now.
For now, yes.
Correct. And we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, is your committee and ward reports. We'll start first with Larry Cleman, Ward one.
I'll make a brief report for the meeting. I did attend the August 6th County Council meeting, where they were discussing, or actually acting on, an item to reduce the edit funding, which would have reduced TELCITY's share by over $371,000. I think that is now kind of in limbo, at this point. I did attend that meeting. On August the 14th, I attended the Perry County Development Corporation Board meeting, and I think I've got five copies there, so. And this is just a, a report that was distributed at that meeting, and if you flip it over to the backside, I just wanted to highlight a few things, the Perry County Development Corporation, which we have a contract, the city has a contract with, using part of our edit funds. But if you'll notice, down at the bottom of the page, our impact, they secured $2.7 million of ready 1.0 funds, sparing anticipated $17 million in private investment for Perry County, including 60 new single-family home sites, 27 of those are at Forest Canton, 33 of those is the first phase of Hoosier Heights subdivision. Also, those ready funds went for upgrades at the TELCITY IV Tech Career and Technology Center, and improvements, I think they've got $600,000 they committed to the sports complex, is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
$600,000 going to the sports complex in Hardenham Park. They successfully advocated for a 200% increase in state and federal childcare reimbursement rates, resulting in more than a quarter of a million dollars for local childcare providers in 2023. What that means is the people that are eligible for that childcare program, they get their childcare payments subsidized, so that's money going, helping those families pay their childcare bills, and so that rate brought in more than a quarter of a million dollars into Perry County, just the increase in that rate. Make my move relocation incentive program, as of August, there's been 10 new households with 28 household members moving into Perry County. These are households that live outside of the state of Indiana, and those households have an average household income of $93,000. It's estimated that those new households have a half a million dollar in annual economic impact in Perry County, and it created $15,000 in new annual local tax revenue. So those people, by working here, are paying into the local income tax and the edit tax. And then, under workforce development initiatives in 2023, they worked with over 125 local employers, and more than 600 local students were involved in the workforce development initiative. So that's just a summary, I got a, I mean, we, at every board meeting, we get a, and Chris is on the board, he gets, I don't know, it's 20 pages, I'm not going to go through all that, but just kind of summarize, highlight some of the things that Perry County Development Corporation does for our community, and I just wanted to hand that out. I attended, and Brian was there also, we had a planning commission meeting on August the 15th, where the building permit application for the courthouse addition was presented. It was approved by the planning commission, including a waiver of fees. Just for the record, I voted against that, because I didn't think the fee should be waived. Just my opinion, but it carried. On August the 29th, I spent three hours watching the county council meeting, I did not go to it, but I spent three hours watching the livestream, where they were talking about the edit tax again, and I think the meeting ended up where there was a motion made to approve it, and there wasn't, was not a second to that motion, so my understanding is that that died for lack of a second, so I don't know if there will be any additional action. Jeff and Chris were both there at the meeting, and, and did a great job representing the city in making their presentations, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And, if I can go ahead and make my partner pride?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
My partner pride for September is Carolyn Everard, she lives at 82 River View Drive in Finnhaven, and she's been in that house, I think, since 1976. She takes excellent care of her property. Carolyn's a good neighbor in Finnhaven, so that's my partner pride.
Okay. All right, thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Ward two, Brian Stein.
I attended a planning commission, as Larry said. And I think my partner pride this, this September should be the Joe Schaefer Park project. I think that should be, that is, that is, that was a diamond in the rough, and now it is the diamond out there, as far as I'm concerned, in my area. And I think that's why we should recognize that that was done for all citizens, and I think that's what I was pretty cool to do. So, that's all I got for this.
All right. Ward three, Mr. Philip Simpson.
Just, I've watched a lot of meetings. Out at the courthouse, some very entertaining meetings.
They're, they're long.
Yeah. So it looks like we won't have to make some last-minute edit adjustments, which is good. My partners in pride will be the La Granges at 615 10th Street, Cindy and Kent. That's all I got.
That's all you got, all right. Mike Finley, Ward four.
I don't want to introduce something that's going to require talking about it for an hour, but-
Go for it.
What I'm hearing from my constituents is the problem with the feral cats, that's why I asked, and other annoying animals, like we've heard from some of our constituents. I know in my case, the house next door to our shop was, you know, the, the city did everything they could, they sued her, they got judgments against her, they, they hired people to trap the cats and take them to be euthanized. Over by the high-rise, and even on 12th Street, there's a problem, people feeding the cats, then they, at night, they come over to the house, and one lady has dogs inside, and they can sense the cats outside, and they go on a barking spree. I don't know, I don't know what, what the answer is, and it's a long, drawn-out process, and I hate to bring it forward now, but that's what I'm hearing about in my, my Ward four. But, partner in pride, our citizens maintained their property, at least maintained their property in extreme hot, dry conditions, it was pleasant to drive around and try and pick something out, it was easy to do, hard to pick one, though. But anyway, we, I went with Jane and Terry Schaefer at 1511 13th Street. They've done recent landscaping and quite a bit of remodeling in the house also, it's beautifully kept. Thanks, thanks for listening and asking.
All right. Gerald Yackely, council member-at-large.
We have a meeting, I believe it's Friday, on the insurance protocol room.
You talking about the health insurance?
Yeah.
Yes.
As council president, I probably need to be there, if I can all make it 10 o'clock, I think, isn't it?
One o'clock.
One o'clock, good thing you told me, because I forgot. But my partners in pride is Lawrence and Karen Kelly, they live at 4156 Chestnut Grove, where we just paved that new road, first house on the left.
Oh.
And they, they really do a good job, put out a lot of flowers every year and everything, and they were tickled to death.
Wonderful.
So, that's my report.
That's great. All right, any statements or questions or comments from the city attorney or clerk treasurer?
I would like to thank this entire council. Having gone to a couple of other council meetings in the past month, I can't stress how pleased I am to work with this council, this mayor, this clerk treasurer. Functionality, we have, we have a functioning council, we have a functioning city government, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Connie, any statements from you?
No.
Did you bracket the last meeting about your recent certification and your award?
No, I didn't.
Do you want to brag about it now? It's a good thing.
It's a good thing.
It's a great thing.
I finally have completed all the Rs and everything that were required to become a certified municipal clerk, so. Give me a pay raise if you want, 2%, I'll give it 2%. No, it's just something that I- Yeah.
Well, she's got something, she's, a press release she'll probably put out with the newspapers soon, right?
Oh, I will, okay.
You should, you should be very, you know, on top of just your day-to-day work and your day-to-day activities that you've had to done with, you know, working budgets and insurance and just everything else, making time to get that certification shows you've went above and beyond in your role.
Because we have to get so many hours every year of training, and then this was more, yes.
We're proud of you.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I was questioned by some constituents about the road on Russian Ford from the highway there at 37, or 60, 37. Why it's not paved to where the pavement stopped.
Okay, that's city limits.
That's the city?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we actually went there and patched it last fall, and, you know, fixed a lot of the big issues up there. It, the pays are rating on it, that, not saying required, because they don't say required, but we have other streets that need paved just as bad as that one, and so we just haven't, it's on our list, it just haven't got, been able to get to it yet.
Okay, because they were asking, if you pull off there and go towards, like, Lou Walters's house, there's nothing paved there, and they were asking, you know, who's is that?
Yeah. And there's that famous culvert, culvert, whatever you want to call it, needs work too, and that's got to have occurred too, you know. It is on our list, I promise you, it's, it's not that we're ignoring it, but, you know, we've got a lot of roads, you know, prime example is Old Highway 66, I think it's might be called a cross between the creek and McDonald's. Have you driven that road lately?
Yeah.
Old National Maker?
I always wondered who owns that.
Well, we do, yeah. But wow, is it bad, and, you know, that's just a prime example, you know.
Well, those, I heard you say those are inverted speed bumps.
Inverted speed bumps, there you go.
I guess that is good, sir.
I mean, you got to have something to say, so.
That topic works.
All right. Yes.
I just want to, Mike, you brought up feral cats, and it, it is a problem, but just coincidentally, I don't know how many of you guys are part of the AM service where you get email messages all, all the time, but I'm part of that, and one of the topics of conversation today in that listserv was exactly what you're talking about, feral cats and dogs, and one of, one of the commenters made, they said, hey, we'll make a deal with you, if you take our feral cats, we'll take all your dogs.
I saw that. I almost chucked it in 72s.
Yeah.
Trading animals, okay.
I would, aside from any solution, I would so encourage our residents, as, I mean, I'm as tender-hearted as the next person, but do not, do not feed animals that don't belong to you.
Do we need to put something in the paper about the law?
We could.
If you feed the cats, they're your, your responsibility.
That certainly, there is certainly a body of law where that would be legitimate. Now, legally enforcing it may be something, but there is, there's certainly a body of law that says you feed it, you own it.
I think the animal shelter has done a good job in promoting the neutering and spay program.
And cost-effective programs for that.
Yes, and, and I think they've done a good job with that, and, and hopefully, over time, that'll help the situation, but, you know.
If somebody wants to feed it, they want to catch it, they want to spay and neuter it, then there you go.
Yeah.
But just putting out that food dish, no, please, citizens, don't do that.
Keep in mind, a few months back, the county did present to us a, an animal ordinance that kind of would be county-wide in essence, but they wanted to kind of mirror ours close. I don't know the status of that, so council, I'll email the commissioner and find out what, what the status is of that moving forward, or-
I thought, the last time that Charlie Baumeister talked to us, that he thought there was some recent state legislation dealing with that, and that he, they were actually going to have to take a look at it to see if state law has changed.
I think that's going to help with what you're saying with feeding the cats, is this whole working together county communication that we really need, that needs to be improved. You know, we've, we've reached out and, and so forth, that comes both ways, they've got to reach out to us, so.
Is this the last month for partners in pride?
No, October is.
Four more months.
One more, okay.
One more month. All right. We'll move on, there's no, old business, so we'll just jump right now down to new business. TELCITY Electric Department Board Appointment, council, in your folders, you'll see a spreadsheet there of who is currently on there, and when their terms are up. There is one term up for the council appointment. It's October 1st is when it, I guess you'd say expires, it's a four-year term, currently held by Dwayne Poole. He was appointed back in 20, 2016, and reappointed back in 2020. And you also notice, under mayor, I have one appointment also. Don't ask me why it's the fourth and the first difference, but whatever, it is, and he was also appointed in 2016, and that's currently held by Joe Don. What I was going to propose is, we'll put this out on our Facebook page, if Joe or Dwayne want to serve again, I'm sure they will send a letter in stating that, and anybody else that would be interested in for consideration can do the same. I was going to make the deadline September the 30th, that's a Monday, we'll just say at 4:00, does that work, 4:00 PM? And I'll try to get those, or Doty will email those out to the council for consideration for their meeting on October the 7th. That gives you roughly that whole week to either call these individuals that are going to be considered, or they're currently the ones that's holding that role if you want to reappoint, so. Does that work?
That is a politically balanced board.
That is a politically balanced board, it's, I'm glad you pointed that, you'll notice that's the difference, the Rs and the Ds on there.
Is Bob Conner just not?
I don't know why it doesn't have, I think we, without throwing any, anything out there, I don't know why that doesn't have the political affiliation.
Bob does his own thing.
Well, that is, that I will definitely grant you.
He's a, he's a-
Hey, I love Bob.
He's a great man.
Your sir lets still stay long?
That, that one is, I know is still politically balanced, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's all on TELCITY Electric.
Do they have to be a resident of the city?
They have to live in city, yes, live in city limits, that's correct. We came up on that when I was on council, where, I don't know, I think they were served by TELCITY Electric but weren't in city limits, it was just, and they have to have a certain age, too. There's an age requirement, I think.
I don't, I swear, wasn't there a thing? I don't, I don't, I don't know about that, although I would be deeply suspicious about whether that would satisfy a challenge.
The reason I say that is they wanted to point, like, Erin Emerson to it, and she wasn't.
Oh, oh, maybe a minimum age.
A minimum age, yeah.
I remember that.
It was a hot mess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'd tell you, anyways.
But if there was a maximum age, I think we'd have a serious federal age discrimination issue if they had that.
All right. We'll move on now to item B, additional appropriations, so Connie, I'm going to let you drive this unless you want me to, real quick.
Uh, doesn't matter, I can do it, no problem.
It's all you.
Okay, and this is going to be Additional Appropriation Resolution 2024-20, where it has been determined that it's now necessary to appropriate additional funds beyond those that were appropriated in the annual budget now they're far. Section 1, be it ordained by the city of TELCITY, Perry County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. City General Fund, Board of Public Works, Operating Supplies, asking for an additional $20,000. Utilities, asking for an additional $30,000. Utilities, asking for an additional thirty thousand dollars. Pool budget, utilities, asking for an additional ten thousand. For a total of sixty thousand within the general budget adopted this third day of September twenty twenty-four.
Counsel?
And if you need me to explain anything, let me know.
Please do.
Okay? As you notice in your budget book and your operating supplies in the border works budget, it is currently in the red by quite a bit. I think it's like sixteen thousand, so this will help to get it out of the red and have a little bit of spending money for this year. Utilities currently is in the red, and I looked today, and this thirty thousand will not cover everything yet, but hopefully closer to the end of the year, I'll be able to do some transferring within that budget, but I don't think I'd have enough to transfer to cover that whole amount where it's in the red. And in the pool, you'll notice when we get to the transfers, I have several transfers within the pool, trying to get all those line items out of the red, and utilities is one that I still cannot get out of the red. So, and hopefully, I won't have to come back and ask for any more in these budgets, but I don't know.
All right.
Depends how long the splash pads on, how much more water we use at the pool.
What was the resolution number again, please?
Twenty twenty-four dash twenty.
Thank you.
Okay, council, resolution requires only one reading. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll be moving this, handing this down for your signatures.
All right. Now, we'll run to item C, under new business, transfers. So, is this twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one?
This is twenty twenty-four, yes, it is.
All right. Just going down the lines, that's what I figured.
Yes. It's quite lengthy, trying to get things balanced out.
Do you want me to do this one?
You can.
All right. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-one. Resolution by the Telsi City Common Council to make necessary transfers within the classification, within the general budget. General fund, clerk treasurer's transfer from the computer support... Thank you. To the publications of legal notices within the clerk treasurer's budget, five hundred dollars. City attorney, from the office supplies, travel expenses, attorney's budget, one hundred dollars. Pool, from equipment to operating supplies, fifteen hundred. From, transfer from equipment, oh, this is all pool, sorry.
This is all pool.
That's why I was like, where did it go? Transfers, all right. From the equipment to training, four thousand. On the pool, from equipment to utilities, eight hundred and seventy-four dollars. On the pool, from repairs, building, equipment pool to salaries, thirty-one hundred dollars. From park improvements, clerical part-time, or two clerical part-time, two thousand dollars park and recreation budget within. Equipment, excuse me, park improvements to equipment, thirty-five hundred, thirty-five thousand. And economic development commission, from the EDC land development to employees, or EDC employee benefits, and also EDC travel, and that's within the economic development budget. The employee benefit was one thousand sixty, and then the travels, thirty dollars. The from was one thousand ninety. Sorry, I missed that part. Adopted this third day of September twenty twenty-four. So, the resolution only requires one reading.
I don't know if they have any questions or anything. Stephen is here, if they have any questions on any of his, within the pool budget, which he probably isn't aware of what I did in the pool budget, but in the actual park and rec budget, so...
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Actually, Carrie. All right. Amend salary ordinance. So, Connie, do you want me to do this one for you, or you got it? I can't.
Since they have passed the transfer in the park and rec budget for the clerical part-time position, we now need to amend the salary ordinance on this. Now, do we need to read this?
Yep, three times.
Three times?
So, is there a motion?
Do you want me to take it?
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
I'll say you want me to take it.
No, I can do it. Is there a motion?
I was going to say, I don't mind.
Is there a motion for the first reading of ordinance number four dash twenty twenty-four? Motion made by Philip. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. First reading, ordinance number four dash twenty twenty-four. Amendment to the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance two dash twenty twenty-three, approved by the city council on the September third, twenty twenty-four. General fund, park and recreation department, part-time office clerk, twelve dollars per hour, Mayor Chris Scale, clerk treasurer, Connie A. Berger. That's first reading of ordinance number four dash twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to suspend rules for second, third reading by title only?
So, no.
Motion made by Larry. Is there a second?
Second.
By Brian. All those in favor, signal saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Second reading, ordinance number four dash twenty twenty-four. Amendment to the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance two dash twenty twenty-three, approved by the city council on the September third, twenty twenty-four. Third reading, ordinance number four dash twenty twenty-four. Amendment to the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance two dash twenty twenty-three, approved by the city council on the September third, twenty twenty-four. So, you've had the first, second, and third reading of ordinance number four, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion made by Gerald. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Larry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. All right. Next one's item E. We kind of covered, so we are aware of the dispatch joint meeting at Perry County Courthouse, six P.M., and you have a copy of that budget. All right. Moving on to mayor's report. In the border works, we discussed briefly a little bit about the dragging main. For those of you may not have been here or you watched later, you'll learn that the chief is going to issue kind of a statement on social media, telling residents, you know, while we understand they're here to have a good time, but they do need to be abiding by basically traffic laws.
There's no pause in the traffic laws just because the city approves of a dragging main event.
Okay. So, I don't know, I mean, it's, I kind of summed that up. It's a little more detailed than that, but in a nutshell, that's it.
So, will they ticket people if they burn or rob or...
It'll always be at the officer's discretion, but, yeah, but, but no different than if they did it today, or tomorrow, or whatever. It's, you know, if they, if it warrants a ticket and the officer decides that's the case, then they're going to issue a ticket. Somebody does something that's reckless, they may leave in handcuffs.
Will the people in charge or have they been harmed of that?
Yes. Chief has had discussions with Ralph Terry.
Good.
So...
Thank you.
All right. My partners in pride is Baumgar's. It's former Oshlins. I don't know if you all have been up there lately. They've changed names, through some transactions and what have yous. They expanded their retail floor of where they had maybe like more of a stockroom before, where there's more merchandise now, it looks like to me, in wider aisles. It's really nice. They're still moving stuff around, so if you go up there, it might take a minute to find it, but it's really nice. I'm happy for their investment in offering our residents more opportunities for items they may need. Last, a week before last, I attended ICOM, which is the Indiana Conference of Mayors in Madison, and outstanding seminars and learned a lot. They did talk about the community foundation, how cities are doing more partnerships with community foundations, even relates to public safety. So, I thought that was really cool. So, I'm really excited to look more into that and see if there's some opportunities for us in getting creative in our budgeting of that. Also, they had one on integrating housing and economic development, which I thought was really good, and we're working on that, you know, our partnership with PCDC and so forth that we've been doing. There's also one on protecting our water sources. That's one I'll get into a little more later. I'm going to get a bunch of these PowerPoints, if that's okay, and I'll email them to you all. I know they're mayor stuff, but they're still relevant to you all, and if you want to look at them, you can, if not, you don't have to. One of the programs, too, that they have is called the Power of Entrepreneurial Mindset, and it was a guy, he was an educator, I think he was a history teacher, formed a group, and I guess you'd call it maybe a business, if nothing else, called Started Up. And it's trying to get the youth involved and have them come up with ideas, you know, to solve problems, or maybe invent something, you know, like a different spatula or something that you would cook with. I don't know, just random things. I had the opportunity to talk to the guest speaker before he presented and learned that Telsi City High School just signed to start this with him this year. It was, it was awesome. I was really excited, and the guy's presentation was top-notch. I mean, he kept the entire group of mayors engaged the whole time. None of them were messing around on their phones, and it's hard to do sometimes, and he did it. I mean, it is. I'm always like, we're all busy on our phones, getting emails, and doing, but people were focused. It was outstanding. But it's in Ms. Kleeman's class. She's the teacher that's, is on this one at the high school, so just wanted to report that. Thought it was really nice. We had a wonderful Schweitzer Fest, you know, excellent weather, probably the best weather I think we've had for Schweitzer Fest in many, many years. Dragging main, we touched on. Farm to Table, September twenty-first, if you haven't gotten your tickets, that's going on here in the park. The Perry County Chamber of Commerce is hosting their dinner, that they have their picnic dinner at Maulers Camp, September eighteenth. Reach out to Chamber if you want to attend that. And October twelfth, Telsi Strong is doing their Oktoberfest. They had their first one last year, which was amazing. I mean, that was in the, had like the chilies and the soups and stuff. The place was packed. It was a great event, and I hear they've got a lot of vendors wanting to set up, and they did all the pumpkins, and it was really cool. So, make sure you keep an eye out for that information there. Do want to report to the Perry, the former Perry County Moral Hospital. We received, I think it was last week, the opening of bids for the removal of environmental hazards, mainly the asbestos and the fluorescent bulbs and the little ballaces, and there's a few other small little things, I think, but that's going to take about ten to twelve weeks, once that gets done. We have not signed agreement yet. We're still getting everything together for that, but once they get started, so our goal is still hopefully demolition this year. They have to remove these things before they can just go in and demolish it.
Quick question on that while Jim is still here. Could we go up there and knock down the weeds on the front of that property? I don't mean on the backside. They're really getting bad along the road.
Along the road. I'll find out that, see, we don't own it, it's private property, so I'll just verify that with our attorney later, if that's doable or not, what his thoughts are.
I don't, I don't care less what's going on on the back, but right along that road is really...
Sure. And I will tell you...
It's a potential far as...
As part of the overall demolition of the site, and I'm going to get a little bit into the weeds on it, it calls for all that to be cleaned up, trees cleared out and so forth, but it also calls for a fence or a gate at that drive, so people won't be able to drive back there and do illegal dumping or vandalism or whatever, you know, could happen. Obviously, there'll be city officials or whoever have keys to it, but that'll help